Executive Deputy Commissioner of the Division of Mental Hygiene at the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. On behalf of Commissioner Hassan, thank you for the opportunity to testify today on this proposed proposal to establish a needle, syringe, and sharp buyback pilot program. As we know, overdose deaths are at a record high. While data is preliminary, 2021 is projected to be the deadliest year on record in New York City. Between January and September of 2021, nearly 2,000 New Yorkers died of an overdose. During the third quarter of 2021, someone died of an overdose every three hours. Worse yet, over the past several years, we've seen increases in racial, economic, age, and geographic disparities. Black New Yorkers and residents of very high-poverty neighborhoods had the highest rates of overdose deaths and the fastest growth rate in overdose deaths from 2019 to 2020. Data also shows that the overdose deaths increased citywide. So did, so too did geographic disparities in fatal overdoses. So neighborhoods in the South Bronx, which had the highest rates of overdose and death in 2020, experienced among the largest increases in fatal overdoses in 2021. These disparities are a direct result of structural racism, including policies like the war on drugs and historic disinvestment in these same communities. To address this, the city continues to center equity in our response to the overdose epidemic. Aligned with our equity principles, a key guiding principle behind the Health Department's approach is to the overdose epidemic is harm reduction. As you know, harm reduction is a pragmatic approach to reducing the negative health, social, and economic consequences associated with substance use. Harm reduction incorporates a spectrum of strategies from safer use to managed use to abstinence in order to provide people with the tools, the services, and the supports they need to stay alive and well. The Health Department strives to apply a harm reduction approach to all its work to address the overdose epidemic. Much of this work is supported through Healing NYC, an initiative that was slated, that disrupts the opioid overdose epidemic and saves lives. Through this initiative, we conduct surveillance of drug-related health outcomes and use this data to create public awareness campaigns. We fund harm reduction services like naloxone dispensing, provide and expand effective substance use disorder treatment, like increasing access to medications to treat opioid use disorder. So more recently, in 2021, the city built upon the foundation of Healing NYC and implemented new strategies to raise public awareness around fentanyl, increasing drug drop-in and outreach capacity among syringe service providers that serve people who use drugs, and expanding access to medications for opioid use disorder for people who are unstablely housed. Each of these new initiatives are examples of harm reduction approaches. Another critical part of our harm reduction strategy is our partnership and support for syringe service providers programs or SSPs. SSPs are community-based healthcare organizations that offer a range of harm reduction and health services, including sterile syringes, naloxone distribution, overdose education, HIV and Hep C testing and counseling, substance use disorder services, and more. In addition to serving people who use drugs, SSPs also serve the communities in which they are located. SSPs invite people inside, from off the streets, connecting to services, and reduce syringe litter by providing people with places to safely dispose of those used syringes, educating community members and people who use drugs on safer syringe disposal, and regularly conducting syringe litter cleanup and distributing sharp disposal containers. In March of 2021, the city substantially increased the capacity of the SSPs in four high-needs neighborhoods to clean up discarded syringes by funding the creation of six new outreach and syringe litter teams. Additionally, the Health Department and SSPs have worked together with the state, parks, and community members to install syringe disposal kiosks in key locations around the city. The Health Department funds SSPs to maintain these kiosks and dispose of the collected syringes. These initiatives are all intended to engage people into services as well as reduce syringe litter in our community. Between March 2021 and March 2022, the Health Department funded SSP outreach and syringe litter, collecting nearly, and collecting nearly 145,000 syringes. We share the city's, the committee's interest in addressing improperly discarded syringes and increasing harm reduction in New York City. In our experience, the Health Department-funded outreach and syringe litter teams have been very responsive to community's concerns, so I want to acknowledge the impressive work that these teams have done to reduce syringe litter and engage community members into neighborhoods that bear a high burden of overdose deaths. Lastly, we recognize and want to acknowledge that syringe litter is a product of structural factors, and public drug use is driven by a lack of alternative places for people to use drugs. In November 2021, as you know, New York City supported the opening of the first two publicly-recognized OPCs, or Overdose Prevention Centers, in the country. The sites are critical to creating safer hygienic spaces where people can use drugs under the supervision, under the supervision of trained professionals. I will now turn to the legislation being heard, Introduction 609, to establish a clean, a needle, syringe, and sharp buyback program. We appreciate the bill's recognition of OPC as, of the OPCs as a critical strategy for saving lives and advancing harm reduction in New York City. We also share the goal of this legislation to promote safe disposal of syringes and address syringe litter concerns. However, under existing OPC operations, participants must use equipment provided by the OPC and already must discard of such equipment before leaving. So we look forward to continuing to discuss this bill further with council. Thank you Chair Lee and the entire council for your continued partnership, commitment to the health and well-being of New Yorkers. With that, I am happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Dr. McCray. So I'm just going to go ahead and ask a few questions and then hand it over to the deputy speaker as well for her question on the bill. So just for the record, I know that you mentioned some of these things in your testimony, but which communities are currently at the highest risk for suffering from opioid addiction in the city?
At this time, we're seeing the highest rates of overdose happening in the South Bronx and in Harlem, parts of Harlem. But it remains a concern, as you, as you mentioned earlier, across the city.
Okay, and you know, according to the data that you have, does the opioid epidemic disproportionately affect certain races and ethnicities?
Yes. So we're finding that black and brown New Yorkers are bearing the brunt of the overdose epidemic. This is consistent with what we see for other health outcomes, including the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. And what specific resources are being directed to communities who are most at risk?
So we've had a citywide strategy. What we did in 2021, we really wanted to raise awareness around fentanyl and increase risk of overdose. So we did public health campaign, public awareness campaigns, we obviously increased fentanyl test strip distribution, we increased our community engagement, and we also established drug checking services at several of the SSPs, including two of which are now the OPCs. So in those sites, we have co-located drug checking services. So participants are able to come into those space, use drug checking services to determine what is in their drug supply. We also, in 2021, really focused on kind of reducing harm. We expanded SSP capacity, we implemented the public health vending machines to increase the overall availability of naloxone and other health resources, safer use supplies. We also expanded treatment. We established a same-day BUP for people who are unstablely housed, as mentioned earlier, as well in our drop-in centers. And we also, more broadly, enhanced services with, in partnership with health and hospitals, helping to increase system access and coordinating, you know, ED, inpatient stabilization, outpatient clinics, and other kind of, you know, partnerships.
Okay. And this is just in knowing the work in the community and the diversity of New York City and all the language and cultural differences that are out there, but, because I, I would, I would be curious to see also how the concentration of certain communities that are most at risk would change or not change, depending on if you look at the hard-to-reach communities that don't necessarily come forward with a lot of these issues. So I know that in my district, for example, we have forty-five, it's 45% Asian-American, multiple languages that are spoken. And so just out of curiosity, I know we've had sort of conversations about this informally, but are there plans with the DOHMH to sort of have any outreach efforts? And, and, and I say this because I just met with also, for example, the Baharian Jewish community members, Asian-American community members, who are talking about, from a narrative perspective, how these issues are very pervasive in their community, but they're not, you know, it's, there's so much stigma, which we all know is, exists in all communities, but they're not coming forward and talking about this, and so therefore, a lot of them don't know where to go for resources. So just out of curiosity, are there formal plans to, to work with different community-based organizations to address some of these communities? Yeah, in a formal way, I guess, I don't know.
So yeah, so we're, we're open to, you know, we, we're always trying to get out there and speak with community, connect, hear concerns, address concerns. So we're more than happy to kind of set up the, kind of a process where we can kind of reach those communities. We do understand that, you know, several communities do get a lot of, like, attention, but we are continuing to kind of, you know, talk to communities, kind of get an idea about what is, kind of, what are their needs, and then responding accordingly. As you know, this, like, you know, this, you know, this is such a large problem, you know, and all the different community, community meetings I go to, there's concerns around syringe litter. So it's something that we take very seriously. But it's also something that multiple agencies are kind of working on together, right? We have parks, we have PD, DOHMH, you know, even DHS, I mean, lots of different kind of entities are kind of trying to come together to really solve this very complex problem.
Yeah, okay. And how many, I know you said that, you mentioned in your testimony, there are six new syringe service programs, but what's the breakdown per borough, if you could give us that information, across the five boroughs?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
So for the, the syringe service programs, the SSPs, I know you mentioned that there's six new programs that are coming on board, so just, if you could give us a breakdown by borough?
Let me, I can get back to you on those. I know that, I don't, they're satter, so it's, I think we have one in the Bronx. There are, let me, I can get back to that with the exact places, but they are spread across the city, so they're in Manhattan mostly and Bronx, but I'll, can give those numbers to you later.
Okay. In total, so there are six new and how many? There were, how many total are there, I'm sorry?
Six.
Six, okay. And then are they concentrated in the areas that need them the most, or they, are they strategically more spread out, or how did you guys decide where to?
So we go with, they are strategically placed, strategically placed in places where there's the highest need and overdoses.
Okay. And transitioning a little bit over more to the OPCs, Overdose Prevention Center, OnPoint NYC, they reversed over 100 overdoses during the first six weeks of operation, and it seems like it's been a very effective, you know, the two sites that we have have been effective. And so just curious, are there plans to open more OPC locations in New York City, and if so, do you know where and when?
So just for some updated numbers, before, between November 30th of 2021 and August 28th, 2022, the OPCs, OPCs have been used approximately 33,409 times by 1,633 unique individuals, and there have been 462 overdoses that have been averted. The, you know, we've mentioned, we would, we definitely want to see OPCs as a citywide strategy. At this time, we have two. There are no concrete plans to open up another one at this time, but we would like to see this as a broader strategy that's across the entire city.
What are the barriers for expanding? So I, so I know that you just said there are no plans, but what are the barriers in terms of, you know, how, how, what's preventing you from expanding?
So we were very careful, I would kind of talk about two lines of this. We were very careful in selecting providers who were ready to go, who had the ability, the bandwidth, and the experience to implement an OPC or OPC services. So some, where we want to work, make sure that all providers who are interested in open, opening OPC have the ability to do so, logistically, operationally, you know, have the experience of, you know, that may, that would set them up for success. I think another piece, as you're well aware, is that, you know, as the city, we can fund the kind of drop-in services, but we do not fund services in the OPC room or area. So I think some of the kind of challenges might be just, you know, how to fund these services. As you know, we're just not authorized to use funds to, to fund the, city funds to fund the OPC services.
Okay. Just want to take a second to recognize, we've been joined by Councilmember Darlene Neely. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks.
Okay, and, and so those are the challenges around in terms of opening new sites, but are there current plans to extend the OPC's hour of operation? Because I know that some of that conversation I've heard would be, you know, welcome, at least by the folks running it, but it, from your perspective, is there a plan to expand the hours?
Our, we, we look forward to and would love to expand the hours for the OPC and the SSP for 24/7 to 24/7. Obviously, as I mentioned, funding, you know, is a challenge with the OPC portion of it, but our plan is to eventually ramp up to 24/7 for the SSP services.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, so what, if, if they were, like, just for the two sites, for example, if they were to be 24/7, how much of an increase do you estimate in terms of budgets? Like, what is it at now versus how much more we would need to, because obviously, it's staffing, capacity, all that stuff, so if you have a...
I do not, I don't have a figure on me at this time, but I can get that to you.
And then I know that you're collecting a lot of data on the OPCs, and if you could just explain to us what metrics, what data that you're collecting?
So as mentioned, the, we are collecting data on the number of uses, unique individuals, overdoses averted, but the, but the provider also has a rich database, or, you know, set of data that they're looking at around connections to care within the OPC, the, or within the OPC center, which includes the other kind of broader services. One of the things that we wanted to kind of be clear about is that people come to the OPC and they have access to and utilize a number of other services, including mental health services, you know, substance use services, social, you know, access to social services, and in one case, even like massages and acupuncture. And so there's the ability to connect to all different kinds of services.
Good, yeah, I thought.
All different kinds of holistic services. So we want to understand kind of how people are utilizing not just the OPC, but also the other services that are within the center, which is the magic of that, of it. Everything's co-located, it's kind of one-stop shop, you can get it all there.
Yeah, and one of the things, just for, because on my visit, more, sorry, more as a comment, was that because of the acupuncture and the organizations that they're partnering with, a lot of folks that are not using drugs and, and have opioid addictions are going there just for those services, and so it's, it sort of gives more anonymity, and you don't know who's going in for what, and so it just becomes more of an open, you know, welcoming space, I think, for people to come in. So I have to say, it was, it was great to see that, too. So I know the answer to my next question, which is listed here, but for the record, and then I'll give my little anecdotal thing after, but does DOHMH, well, and the OPCs, they, you, do you, you work directly with the local precincts, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how's that experience been across the two sites?
So the, the providers report a very, very close relationship with the precincts that they're in. You know, officers will oftentimes will bring folks there, they have, they're continuously around the area, providing public safety services, and it's a very strong relationship by, by all accounts. So we're, we're very happy to see kind of how that relationship has, has played out.
Thank you. And when we spoke to the program director last week, one of the things that he said was the most successful that he felt was the fact that they had built such a trusted relationship with the local precinct. And it's funny, because as we were doing the tour, we went downstairs, and the community affairs officers had brought the new, there was a new recruit there, and they were really just saying, this is the place, you know, you need to build relationships. They were talking to a lot of the folks that come in, they were talking to the staff, and it was just actually really great to see that dynamic. So that was one of the things he said he was the most proud of in terms of their successes, which was great to see. Okay, and then my final question before I turn over to Deputy Speaker is, does the DOHMH have any data on the scope of opioid use and addiction in AANHPI communities in New York City, and if so, what were the findings?
We do collect that data. I do not have those numbers on me at this time, but I, we do collect that data.
Okay, thank you. And then Deputy Speaker, I don't know if you wanted to ask some questions?
I don't have a lot of questions. I mean, obviously, we've had this conversation multiple times, and I would love to allow my colleagues to ask questions, but I do have just to, regarding the, does the, does the Department of Health require data on the volume of syringe litter per community?
Do you?
Do you require, like, if you're, we're, we're also, right, we're working with NIRE, for example, like, are they required to submit data to the Department of Health in regards to the volume of syringe litter that they are picking up from the community?
They do, they separate the data that they have, because they receive data that's, they receive syringes that are both, they collect, they're counting syringes that are both used at the OPC as well as from their pickup.
Is there any way to separate that? Is it, why, why is, why are we counting it that way? Because I just, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering, as a, as a, as a tool of measuring success, right, I would want to know, all right, we have ten providers out on the street, are we making a dent, right, on the, on the syringe litter issue? And I, and I would, you know, summarize that in my cases, in the, in the South Bronx, maybe a little bit, in the East Harlem part right now, and it, it's, you know, it's a balancing act, one year is like hit or miss, we're not. And, and I know that they're out there, I see them, they're, they're doing great work, but it would be interesting to know if they're collecting that information and then coming back and saying, okay, this is an area where we need a higher, you know, a, a more drastic approach.
I mean, yeah, they are, they do collect data and they do separate it from kind of what's used there versus what their outreach teams do pick up. I think they also recognize that there's just not enough people to actually do all of the work that's needed, which is kind of what, you know, some of the pieces that you've always, you've frequently kind of talked about. It's like, there's a lot being done, but it's just not enough in the end, and they, and they do acknowledge that it's just challenging to get to all, everything, but they, they do work very, you know, stridently to, to, to get to all calls.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, it's, it's important that the, the public and, and also the colleagues understand the complexity of this issue, because the introduction of the fentanyl has really changed the game in that it's changed some sort of composition within the individual that has, you know, made it much more difficult to treat the actual addiction, and, you know, what we're seeing is really the result of that. I think, you know, for me, it's important, you know, whenever I speak about this, I'll get like ten calls afterwards, oh, I, I hear that you have a problem, you know, do you need a program? And I'm like, no, I have an abundance of them. That's not my problem. The problem is that we're treating harm reduction from, from the perspective of the user, right? That's it. Like, we stop there, and it's, at least this is my, my, my perception, and we're not thinking about the, the unintended consequences, right, the impact on the local community, the fact that we are desensitizing the community, that, you know, they're subject to this. Like, I have people looking out of the public housing development, and I have upwards of 20 men, you know, injecting every single day and night, and now, you know, the community is, is, has become so desensitized, right, that the language that they're using to describe these individuals is very disrespectful and, you know, and inhumane. But I can see how it would get to that point, all right? We don't want to create an environment where now we're normalizing behaviors where young children, specifically children of color, are, you know, engaged in this cycle, right, of dysfunction and, you know, unhealthy behavior. But we want to make sure that the individuals that are using are coming in contact and, you know, provided access to services that are going to cater to every, you know, you know, to all of their needs. So I, I have to say that because, you know, it's, the conversations have been really rough around, you know, the opioid crisis, and, you know, this is something that, you know, a couple of years ago was primarily in my district and, and Councilmember Botcher's district, you know, in, in, again, in Washington Heights and the South Bronx, but now we're seeing, right, that it's, it's a growing problem citywide and nationally. And so I really need the Department of Health to start, because I, you know, and I don't know that this is a Department of Health responsibility, but I need you to tell me that it isn't, and how you're working on approaching this. It has to be a multi-agency approach. I found that that was helpful when we were dealing with the synthetic marijuana crisis on 125th Street. It involved multiple agencies working together. You have, you know, the issue of folks coming into the community to, you know, to sell the drugs. I mean, they're like selling it out, like if it was candy in front of, you know, everyone, like this, there is a policing aspect to this. There's the syringe litter, right, which is the public health aspect to this. This is, you know, there's the harm reduction services, are those, you know, appropriate? Like, there's just a, so many layers to this that, you know, it, it can become complicated, but I, I, I just want, you know, anyone that's, that may be thinking, well, you know, the Democrats have gone nuts, and the progressives are now going to pay, you know, drug users to, to buy the drugs, that that is absolutely not the intent right now. We have a serious, serious problem in the city, and, you know, it needs to be addressed, and, and, and quite frankly, I think that this is the right step in, in, you know, in the, in the beginning of that process. And with that, I'll, I'll leave it, because I really would love to hear from my colleagues on this issue, and I thank you, you know, for being such a good resource. I know you've been at multiple events throughout my district as well, and you've seen and heard some of the concerns there as well, and, you know, I really appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Speaker. And I'm going to now turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Eric Botcher, to ask questions, and I believe each of the members will have five minutes, but of course, if you need more, take them.
Good morning. Could you clarify the Department of Health's position on the proposal for a syringe buyback program? Does the Department of Health support this proposal or not?
So we, we, you know, support the intent of the bill. We, we are very much committed and share concerns around syringe litter that is being, you know, discussed or kind of, community members have concerns about. So we, we support the intention of the bill. We know that the purpose is to divert kind of the syringes from the street into the OPC. We fully support, again, the intention to, to address syringe litter. We are doing our research right now. There are a few syringe service buyback programs throughout the country. One that's notable is in Boston. We have a call coming up with that Boston group to really understand kind of what their data, understand, I mean, some of the preliminary results are pretty promising. We want to know more about kind of how it works, you know, operationally, how they're collecting their data, what they're measuring, and we look forward to having that conversation with that Boston group. You know, one of the things I mentioned earlier in the testimony was that people who come through the OPC specifically have to, you know, discard of their materials before they leave. So it wouldn't really be addressing problems with syringes going back into the community. If you've been to the OnPoint site, you'll see that downstairs in their basement, they have a stockpile of syringes that they collect kind of on an ongoing basis, and those are syringes that would be in the community, but because of the OPC, they're there in that space. So again, we're looking, we're kind of looking to do our research to figure out kind of like what, what makes the most sense, because we do share, we want to be responsive to concerns around syringe litter. But we're also, we want to be, we also be mindful about kind of unintended, unintended consequences as well. So some of the kind of unintended consequences that we've talked about, we've kind of heard from other providers, community members, and doing our own research, were things around like, you know, people inappropriately removing syringes from disposal kiosks, you know, taking syringes and returning them for profit, and also safety concerns around the man, the handling of syringes by people who are not trained. Those are just a few, and we want to kind of continue to do the research to figure out what, what makes the most sense, because we want to be responsive and work with folks, work with everyone here and the city to really, you know, to address the challenges.
Thank you. Could you provide a timeline at which we can expect to hear from the Department about the position that you've arrived at?
We look forward to, after, even after this meeting, to really being able to engage the Deputy Speaker, other folks on the council, to really kind of really, and once we speak to Boston and other municipalities, to really hone in and really... and once we speak to Boston and other municipalities, to really hone in and, and really craft a, craft a bill that really makes sense, and that really would be effective, um, to address the real concerns that we have.
Thank you. What, what should residents do when they encounter needles on the streets, syringes on the street? Who should they call?
So our syringe service providers, uh, do syringe, uh, uh, pickup. So, uh, you know, for example, you're in East Harlem, uh, you're on a hundred and twenty-fifth street in Lex, uh, you, you know, that's very close to the OPC. You can call, you can call On Point, uh, and they have a team that will go out, uh, and pick up these syringes, whether it's one syringe or, you know, a thousand syringes, um, within, within hours.
But for your everyday resident who might not be familiar with what service providers are in the neighborhood, should they call three-one-one? Who should they call?
Three-one-one would be the place to call, yes.
And when a resident calls three-one-one, let's just pick the intersection of Forty-second and Eighth, right? You find a needle in a tree bed, call three-one-one, to whom is that call routed to get that needle picked up?
Sanitation.
Sanitation.
Sanitation. I'm not so sure that that's true.
Close to sanitation. It's supposed to go to sanitation.
I'm sorry, I did call three-one-one. I had a whole bag of syringes in front of my office. They told me to call tomorrow morning. I said, your employee's gonna be picking up these syringes. People were opening up the bags and started taking them, and it's a, a different program that come pick them up. I can't remember the name of it now, but it was a whole di, I had to stay there two hours for a different, um, department in the sanitation to pick up the syringes. So we should know, I'll find out.
Yeah, well, Councilmember Mealy is, just for the record, Councilmember Mealy is sharing what experience we've had in our office, that there is not a very good system to get syringes picked up. Do you communicate, does the Department of Health communicate with three-one-one, the Department of Sanitation about syringe disposal in areas that are not around an OPC?
We do regularly communicate with, uh, Department of Sanitation and parks. Um, I think what you're raising is a very good point around education, how you educate the public about how to access these, right? And making sure that we're clear and, and consistent across, uh, everyone here, that everyone's clear. Uh, so we'll, we'll look at, we'll look into that, but we do, uh, we, we should probably provide some clear, uh, guidance for, for folks. Education is always key, letting people know how to access the services.
But, um, your answer is that the Department of Sanitation comes to pick up those syringes?
I, we, we will get, we will get back to you on that.
Okay. I think this would be a great topic for future conversation, near, near future conversation.
The flow, the flow.
Because people are encountering syringes in greater and greater numbers, and needless to say, it's a big concern. People don't know what to do, and they aren't having much luck with the Department of Sanitation. I don't think that many people in Department of Sanitation think that they're responsible for...
Well, there is a small unit in, within the Department of Sanitation, we actually helped fund it, uh, through, uh, through city budget. Um, we, under Catherine Garcia, had, uh, we received additional resources to expand it. Uh, it's a, it's a very small unit, but you have to call three-one-one, they don't come right away. Um, you know, they, it, it can take up to twenty-four hours before they get there, which is the whole point of the bill, right? Is that we're using, I think, you know, this is actually a more cost-effective way of doing this, um, because right now we're using multiple, uh, you know, agencies and groups to, uh, collect the syringe, so there's not a lot of synergy between them. Um, and we're, we're actually, we're paying out a lot of money, uh, to do this and not do it well, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and next I wanna call in, uh, Councilmember Kabon?
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, for the, for the stream, I think.
Thank you so much. Um, I mean, first I just wanna, uh, thank y'all, because I would be remiss not to, to talk about the fact that, um, the Department of Health was incredibly brave, uh, when they expended their time, energy, and resources to making sure that On Point could open its doors to, to have the first overdose prevention centers in the country. And then the ultimate result of that being one of the most perfect examples of harm reduction and, and care infrastructure that certainly I have ever, um, witnessed, and it's a really, really beautiful thing, and it was only possible because the department was, was willing to take those steps at a time, in an environment where there's federal, um, you, you know, there's a federal court case pending. Uh, and I also think that it's likely because of the, the example that we have set here that we are that much closer to, to having a, a really favorable decision, um, in that, in that case. And, and much more likely that we'll see these kinds of sites across the country. And so I just, I, I wanna name that bravery than when we talk about this legislation in terms of like doing whatever it takes to save lives, to keep people safe. Um, and, and then follow up with some questions. I'm glad that y'all are connecting with folks in Boston and, and other, um, other places. I'm wondering if, I know that you said you're going to meet with them, but at, at this juncture, uh, do you have information you could put on the record about the success of the programs in those other places, what kinds of results they're getting? And also how they are intentionally overlaying buyback programs, um, with other strategies that, that exist in their jurisdiction? So that's one of my questions. Um, and then to be responsive to some of the things that, that you talked about, uh, in your exchange with Councilmember Botcher, uh, and, and some concerns, you know, we know that the, the, the data and the research shows that, that people don't travel to OPCs, right? There's pretty much general catchment area, they're not coming from other neighborhoods to come in. Um, and so i- i- in order to, to kind of like get to the folks who, um, you know, aren't coming in to use in an OPC, aren't, you know, bringing their syringes in for an exchange, do you think it's appropriate to have more buyback, more, more exchange sites where buybacks could take place outside of the OPCs? Like, do you see that as an, an avenue? How many syringe exchanges do we even have across the, the city? Do you identify a need for more of those, um, sites, whether they're kiosks, whether they're mobile, whether they're, they're brick and mortar? And, and if that would, um, be helpful here? Those are just some of my questions. Sorry, I'll stop there.
All right, that's fine. Um, so yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm also very, we're also very excited about kind of a lot of the synergy that's happening across the country, um, you know, around OPCs. Uh, and we know we're in constant communication with, you know, our federal, uh, partners, as well as folks of the state, and other jurisdictions who are saying, how do you, how did you do that? Um, so we're really, we're really proud of the work that we put in, uh, you know, for years and years and years to, uh, to get these up and going. Um, the, we have fifteen syringe service programs, uh, and, um, and so, and, and also a kiosk, a various kiosks, uh, throughout, uh, the city that are maintained by both Department of Health and by parks. Um, the Boston numbers, uh, what we know from there, some, some of the preliminary data, uh, before having spoken, spoken to them, we kind of have some access to some of the data. Um, you know, it's, since it started in December of twenty-twenty, um, you know, what they were doing is basically giving people twenty cents per needle with a maximum of a hundred dollars, uh, a ten dollars, a ten dollars per day. Um, you know, when people return the syringes, um, outreach workers at that space, uh, offer harm reduction services, connection to other services, that's, that's the flow. Um, and they've gotten about, uh, one point seven million syringes, uh, uh, collected, uh, so averaging about twenty-two thousand per week. Uh, and there's been a lot of fifty, but they've, they've, they've cited a fifty percent decrease, uh, reduction in service requests related to needle clean, needle, uh, cleanup. Um, but again, those, the data, we wanna kind of know more about that, what that really means, um, and make sure it's not an artifact of, you know, other kind of, um, environmental conditions.
Are there plans to expand, um, the number of, of syringe service programs we have, um, in the city? Plans to expand the number of kiosks, and, and if so, like, what are they?
At this time, there is, there are no plans to, uh, expand the SSPs, any concrete plans to expand the SSPs, um, but they are located, uh, you know, across the city. Um, we, uh, as mentioned, uh, during testimony, we will, or may, yeah, I mentioned it in testimony, we, uh, have, you know, the public, public, public health vending machines as well, that'll be coming out, uh, soon. Uh, and, uh, close to those, uh, close to those, um, to those kiosks are, will be, uh, sorry, close to the vending machines will be, um, kiosk as well.
And can I ask one more question, Chair? Thank you. Um, do, do you have any information on what data or, or research shows in terms of how far somebody will go to make use of, um, a, a, uh, an SSP? Like, sort of what is, what is an SSP's catchment area?
I don't have the, I don't have that off the top of, top of mind. I mean, we do know that people are traveling far for OPCs, uh, kind of more broadly to use, um, but I, I can get the information around kind of, uh, the literature and look at the literature how people will tend to, how far they'll tend to go for SSP services, which is a different level of service.
I mean, that would be great, great information to have, because, I mean, working backwards from there, then it tells you exactly how many we need, right? To, to sort of get the best outcomes and ensure that, um, as many folks who are, are using substances are also going to be just as inclined to then turn in that needle. I, I mean, the thing, the same, you know, theory applies to, to composting and trash, and they know if, if you're within fifteen-minute walk, then you'll do this thing. Um, and, and kind of being able to, to guide behavior and encourage certain behavior through infrastructure.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and we have also Councilmember, uh, Vicky Palladino, who wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Good morning, and thank you for being here. Really appreciate the knowledge that I'm getting today. And I am, uh, I have to say, after speaking to Councilmember Diana here, I have to say that I'm one hundred percent on board with this. Um, I wanna address and backpedal a little bit on the, on the safety issues as far as not being able to dispose of the syringes. As she stated, there's layers to this cake, and I wanna know, with how many bags did you have outside?
Three.
Three bags, so huge bags.
Big.
Bagged. Uh, why doesn't this come under hazardous waste? Because it's not sanitation. We, we have to, we have to make, you know, we worry about the way we get rid of computers, we worry about the way we get rid of electronical devices. And yet, we have areas in this city that people are wondering how they could clean their own streets up to prevent these kids from picking things up that they could get an infection from, die from. It's becoming normal. This is not normal. Um, and I'm just, I wanna know about that. I also wanna know, what's the budget? How much money has the city taxpayer dollars been going into this program that if implemented properly, um, which I'd like to be a part of? Uh, how we could best go about this? Because this can't go on the way it's going on. This is becoming, as Diana had said, uh, normal activity. They're just not going to, uh, these prevention sites or, uh, these injection sites. They're doing it out on the street. These kids are seeing it, and then they're dropping their debris on the sidewalk. So it doesn't fall under sanitation, it's hazardous waste. And we need to know, I wanna know budget. I wanna know about how we're gonna go about cleaning up the streets in these neighborhoods. You know, where I come from, in my district, I'm in District Nineteen, it's there. It's, it's, it's there, but it's behind closed doors, like in Linda's district. We're neighbors. Uh, it's not as pre, it's prevalent, but you just don't know it, the kid's injecting in his bedroom instead of out on the street. So we have to figure out how we're gonna help the neighborhoods that are hardest hit, and I'd like to know the budget for this.
So for, uh, uh, the budgetary piece, you know, we did expand SSP, uh, you know, cleanup last year. Uh, I don't have the budget with me, I gotta, can get that back there, I feel, you know, I apologize for that. Um, but the OPC or the SSPs are trained to really deal with, uh, you know, with syringe cleanup. Um, you know, I, you know, share concerns around like children's safety and, you know, people who have access or who are coming into contact.
But, but the thing is, I don't mean to interrupt, and I'm sorry.
That's fine.
The thing is, the way you're, uh, going about the cleanup, is it working?
Yeah.
It's not working, it's failing. And, uh, I just wanna know what steps we could take as a council and implement what needs to be done. Uh, I brought up hazardous waste. Why isn't this considered hazardous, hazardous waste? A computer is, a telephone is, uh, why isn't, why isn't the syringes and every other thing? Why isn't that considered hazardous waste?
Yeah. I cannot speak to why it's not hazardous waste, but I can say that, um, the, you know, we are very much committed to going to where the services need to be, where there's higher rates, trying to be responsive to that. Um, like I said, we did expand outreach, uh, at, at the SSPs. Um, and we are, you know, the Health Department has taken a very strong kind of, you know, place-based approach, like going to spaces, providing services in places where it's needed most. Um, we know that they are in some spaces where it's needed most, it's really a...
We have only six spaces in five boroughs.
Yeah.
Six. There's eight million people here. I keep going, whenever, whenever I'm in a hearing, I keep relating back to budget. I always relate back to the population of this city, and I understand that you're running Boston as a model, which we all need a model. Uh, but New York is always a little bit different than every place else.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, uh, we need to take that model, expand on that model, uh, but most important, make it work. So while we're throwing money again, like I say a lot of times, and people have me on record as saying so, shot glass over Niagara Falls, doesn't work. We need to go to the highest-hit districts that are, and apply our energies there. This is, these, they are, they are at risk. These kids are at risk. I have a playground across the street from a women's, uh, homeless shelter that is riddled with needles all the time. The civic associations take it upon there themselves to pick it up. But these are needles, used needles. What do they do with the used needles? They put them in a black shopping bag so nobody knows what they are, and they go into regular garbage. That's a fact. So, need help with that. We need to expand on that. So, thank you very much for your time.
And I really appreciate, uh, Deputy Speaker's kind of the bill and the intention of the bill, right? It's like, how do we do this? And I think that that is, I mean, that's a conversation we wanna continue to, we wanna have, uh, and set, go for ourselves. Uh, we do think that there, there's a need, uh, to make sure we get syringes off the street, and we wanna make sure that whatever strategy that we're employing is the best, so, uh, I think...
Is it possible to concentrate on districts like Diana's and your district and, 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 and Councilman Botcher's district? Is there any way that we could just like, you know, Linda is in my district, is okay, we're okay compared to these other districts. These districts need help, and what are we doing? I mean, one in every borough? It doesn't work well for me, and I wanna know the money that's being spent. Doesn't work well for me. Questions that need to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which we will definitely follow up with. Um, and finally, uh, Councilmember Mealy, go ahead.
I just have two questions really, cause that was a traumatized day. Um, and I, I do concur that it has to be a waste, um, department, maybe, that after you call three-one-one, they told me to call sanitation, and I called sanitation, spoke to a supervisor. They said, no, wait until tomorrow morning, and it was so sad to hear that. I said, your employees come to pick up these needles. And then I tried to call the intergovernment relations, couldn't get through to no one. It seemed like no one answers the phone anymore. So we only stayed about, I could say, four hours, making sure. I can't remember, I thought, um, our Deputy Speaker would say what department, the name was, that we could get that out to everyone. If they see needles, call that department. So I think I'm gonna put it in my newsletter to make sure if anyone see needles, who to call. But I heard that you said something about holistic. What holistic things that you do with individuals when they at the, I guess, shoot up and in your facility?
So I say holistic in terms of the kind of whole person care. Um, so when you go to, when you go to an OPC, uh, you're able to not only use, uh, you know, um, um, uh, under supervised conditions, but you can also have access to these other services, um, basic needs, showers, um, clothing, uh...
Alkohol, sure.
Acupuncturist?
Yeah. That also?
Yeah, all, all of it, all, all of it. It's like, you know, kind of considering the, kind of a suite of services, uh, and the OPC services, where it's a supervised consumption space, is one of the many services that are offered in, in that space.
Okay.
It's a whole person care.
Okay, then, um, I know I heard you say that they cannot come in with their own equipment, right?
They, they cannot leave with their own equipment.
No, they can't come in. If they have their own shoot-up equipment... If they have their own shootout equipment, they can't come in the facility with it. You said they have to discard it before they come in.
No, they have, they can't leave the facility with, 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 with used supplies.
You still, I said, if someone come into the facility, they can't have their own works?
Yeah, they, yes.
They can?
Yes. But they can't, they can't leave with us, with dirty, with dirty syringes or used materials.
So they could come in with their own shootout, and y'all will discard their works?
Yes, we discard everything that comes in or that leaves.
Okay, then, so if some people do not come inside, how is the trash picked up around that area?
So the OnPoint has a really robust outreach team. So they're regularly kind of outreaching into the community, and they're also responsive to calls from community members and anyone really who spots a syringe, and they'll go pick it up.
How often do that, does that happen?
Daily.
Huh?
Daily.
Daily? So what's the recourse? What are you putting in place that you could maybe have people stand outside and say, no, you can't do it here? What, what is the plan to try to make those areas a safe haven, that you don't have to bring someone out to clean up?
Yeah. I mean, we did, you know, again, increase kind of SSP's outreach capacity or the capacity for the SSP providers. And as part of that, there is the ability to do additional outreach. Because even if you have a small outreach team who out every day, as Deputy Speaker mentioned, the volume is still surpasses what can be picked up by those teams.
Wow, okay. Thank you for your service. But I know we have to see what department name it is that if we call 311.
He says it's a very small department.
Yes, that's what he said.
We come back, circle back, I hate that expression, but
Circle back, yes.
Yeah.
And I mean,
We come back to the same thing.
Yes, I literally couldn't leave because I knew it was a safety hazard to my district. And this was right in front of my district office.
We keep assuming that these drug, the people who are using are of sound mind. They're not. So if they're doing whatever they're doing, and they're doing it on the steps, they're doing it all over the place, everybody's posting everything on Facebook, you see it everywhere. So this is no secret. They're not using the centers. They're all over the streets. And if you think for one moment they're going to say, well, let me dispose of this safely, I think everybody's making a big mistake in assuming that these people are of sound mind. They are not.
They are not. And it was so sad that I had to really stay there and wait and wait and wait. And it was, blood was in some of the syringes. It was disgusting. So please, I would love to see how this pilot could go in every district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for having this important hearing. Thank you.
No. And I just want to note, we've been joined by Councilmember Shahana Hanif. Not to put you on the spot, but others have asked their questions. And so not to, I know you just walked in, but if you had any questions in relation to the bill that you had wanted to ask, I just wanted to give you the time to
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Great. So thank you so much, Dr. McCray, for being here with us today. I just want to thank you so much for just providing us more information. And we look forward, obviously, to ways to partnering with you. And just my one final question I would have to say that I have is, you know, obviously, you know that there's a lot of interest from the council members here, especially on this committee, to helping DOHMH address a lot of these issues. And so, you know, how can we, as a city council, sort of further support DOHMH's effort to address the crisis, the opioid crisis in general? Because I know it's not just, like Deputy Speaker mentioned, it's not just this, you know, syringe buyback bill, and this is not just the only issue. It's multifaceted. So if there are any suggestions or ways that you have to partner with us, we'd love to hear that as well.
I mean, I think specifically for this specific bill, I think continue to have conversation and really think about what's the best, what makes the most sense. You know, I, you know, I think we like to make sure that we're doing initiatives that are sound, kind of that are data-driven, that make sense, and that are going to solve the problem. So I think continue to be in conversation, I think, is always most helpful.
Thank you. And if you guys have not, I would definitely encourage everyone to visit one of the OPCs. They were, it was really great. And I think all of us should go, because it's very eye-opening. And I think, you know, a lot of us, for example, Councilmember Kavon and I and other colleagues, we've been having sort of offline conversations also about, for example, Boston and other cities and what we can do to replicate. So I think that'll be good ongoing conversations to have. So thank you so much.
We're open, we're
Can I add something very briefly? Is that, I like, just the PSA, that we all should be visiting, people from other cities and states are clamoring, they are coming here to visit our OPCs. And so the fact that we are here and able to walk through their doors on any day at any time, I just encourage folks to
And Dr. McCray will come too. You were there when I went. It was also, yeah, we did it together. Yeah.
Yeah, the center has a very, I mean, the kind of speed of transparency opens really the doors to anyone who wants to come and check it out. So if you want to come, we're more than happy to kind of arrange that for you all. So, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Road trip.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I believe at this time that concludes the admin testimony, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
Yeah.
At this time, I will be reaching out to members of the public who have joined us on Zoom. I will call your name. And at that time, please know that you will be limited to two minutes of testimony. There may be a few seconds delay when you're unmuted so that we can hear you. And please wait for the Sergeant at Arms to announce that you may begin before starting your testimony. With that, I will go ahead and call our first panelist, Sarah Noda.
Hi, this is Sarah Noda. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Ayala for her effort to try to reduce the syringe litter and for her work to address the opioid crisis here in East Harlem. I'm a very concerned East Harlem resident, and I'm a mom to three children. Every single day, my three children see people shooting up on the sidewalk on their walk to school, and I can attest to what a problem this is. At this point, honestly, I'm just about willing to try anything to address the needle litter in the community. The idea of creating a buyback program may have the potential to address the syringe litter, but if you're reading through the actual bill, unfortunately, this bill does not include needles that are used outside of the OPC facilities as it is written right now. And as we just heard Dr. Michael Cray of DOHMH testify, the people who utilize the needles and other equipment inside the OPC currently use the, use the equipment that's provided there, and they already discard that equipment inside the OPC facility. If you read through this bill in Section 1, it specifically states that this program is for individuals who use the syringe for a purpose of drug consumption in a facility operated by the OPCs, and then they deposit that syringe or sharp at the same facility after use. But this behavior is already happening, as many of the OPCs at multiple community hearings have testified, no equipment leaves their location. And if you continue on, the bill was written in this way, it doesn't really address what's on our streets. If you look at the very last section of this bill, so Section 3D.
Time has expired.
I'm sorry?
Time has expired.
May I continue? I know there's not that many people here, and this is a very passionate point for me, as I live this every single day, and my children live this every single day. And we really do need something to address what's going on here. Thank you. In Section 3D, the bill explicitly states that only after a year would Department of Health be able to establish a permanent needle buyback program. And only after that year of it being in effect would they decide if they would expand and how they would expand, and if that expansion would include the authorization to buy back needles, syringes, or sharps that are used outside, used in a location, quote, "other than an overdose prevention facility." And I don't see how this is going to work for us this way. I have other concerns about this bill, because it gives Department of Health a full year from the time this bill was implemented to actually begin this syringe pickup program. And I think a more reasonable amount of time, as, you know, Councilmember Ayala stated, it's a very simple bill, a more reasonable amount of time for an adequate program should be around six months to implement. And I also have concerns about the fact that only Department of Mental Health would be deciding the future of this program following that first year of implementation. I think that the community and people that live in the community affected should have some input on whether the program is working or not. In addition to this, with the reporting section of Section 3 and what has to be reported by the OPCs, I want to know more. This is very minimal. I want to know, well, I also, as a whole, I would like to know where the money is coming from for the buyback program. In addition to what's listed and knowing the names and locations of the participating facilities, I'd like to know the number of needles that are handed out by each of these facilities compared to the number that they're taking back in. I'd also like to know as far as the money handed out, like, I would like a monthly and weekly breakdown from each facility for the amount that they're paying to buy back these needles. And I don't want to keep you guys forever. I have a lot that I could probably say. But this idea is promising, but as it is written, it's not written in a way that would make a significant impact on our streets, because it only addresses what is actually going on inside the OPCs right now. And finally, you know, I really would encourage council members to look into how the Boston program is run. It's they, it's my understanding that they go out onto the streets and collect the needles. So it's a very different program. And it's also privately funded. I'll just add that in there. But I think we need a more detailed proposal here to truly address what's going on on our streets as opposed to just addressing litter and containment of litter inside the OPC, which Dr. Michael Cray has already testified stays inside. That's it. Thank you.
Has expired. Thank you, Sarah. And thank you
Thank you.
Thank you for staying on and listening to all the questions and the testimony from Dr. McCray. And, you know, we will definitely take your concerns and notate them and see how we can. I don't know if you wanted to comment?
Well, hold on, sorry. I would like to clarify that, yet, the language in the, in the initial bill was a little bit confusing. I can see why it would give the impression that that's what we were doing, but we're not, this is not, the OPC relationship to this program is that it would, I think, and this is still conceptual, we're trying to work our way through it, is that it would incentivize folks in the community outside that are in the parks, littering in the parks and in our public streets to bring the syringe to the OPC. It absolutely has nothing to do with individuals. This program is not geared towards individuals that are already receiving those services. So that language will be amended to reflect the true intent of the bill.
Thank you for that clarification. And, you know, it's, it's good that, you know, we have the, the whole point of this is so we can get the feedback from the public and adjust it. So thank you so much. Thank you, Sarah. And of course, I want to acknowledge our colleague, Councilmember Nantasha Williams. Also not to put you on the spot, but we're actually at the point of wrapping up. So I just wanted to know if you had any questions on the bill based on what you've read or any sort of, no, comments? Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table now and complete a witness slip. If we inadvertently missed anyone to test, who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom, and I will call on you in the order of hands raised. Seeing no one else, I would also like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of the hearing by emailing it to testimony@council新yorkcity.gov. Chair Lee, at this time, we've concluded public testimony for this hearing, so I will turn it back to you for closing remarks.
Okay. Thank you so much all for being here. And as we heard today, there's a lot of work and synergy around this topic and this issue. So I look forward to working together with our colleagues and DOHMH administration to make sure that we continue to expand a lot of the services that are being offered, and just to take the feedback from all of us here to make this program stronger. So thank you all so much. And with that, we are concluding today's hearing. Thank you so much.